Welcome, this is the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Berlin zoning Board of Appeals. It is being held by a Zoom webinar. Panelists and attendees are advised that their image, voice, and telephone number may be recorded for the record. I'll call the meeting to order at oh, seven oh-two. Let me introduce the members of the board. As I call your name, please raise your hand and say present. Jim Royer.
Present.
Danny Bartlett.
Present.
Pat Jackson.
Present.
Um. Now, you said Keith is not here, correct?
Right, Keith, Susanna, and Ginny are not here.
And we have the Administrative Assistant for Inspection and Land Use Boards, Leanne Leahy, Amy, and I'm always going to mispronounce your last name, Questle, as counsel, and I'm Lynn Ryan. So we do have a forum, do we not?
We do.
Okay, just barely.
Just barely, and I'll let you know when Ginny arrives.
Thank you. Okay, um, we have a hearing set, and I'll set it open at seven oh-three.
Okay, I'll promote. I'll promote the petitioner to panelist.
Please, Joe.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, uh, sorry, the Board. Wayne Bellic Land Design Collaborative, joined by Kathy Adams, the petitioner for the project. Joining us tonight was supposed to be our counsel, I'm not seeing him here. Jonathan Silverstein.
Yes, he just arrived.
Okay.
You wish me to promote him, Lynn?
Please, Joe. Do you have a presentation for us tonight, Mr. Bellic?
Uh, Madam Chair, we're going to have Jonathan, uh, discuss the variance petitions. And then he's going to hand it over to me. Basically, Madam Chair, I'm looking at picking up from our last meeting. If you recall, I were asked to meet with the planning board. And I wanted to, uh, update the board as to the results of that meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, well, uh, thank you, Wayne, and, and thanks, members of the Board, for, uh, giving me the opportunity to present this application. As I indicate, uh, as Wayne indicated, I'm going to present the, uh, the variance application and then turn it back over to Wayne to discuss, the process to date, uh, discussions with Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and, um, some changes to the plan that we're going to make in response to those conversations. And so obviously, this evening, in light of the fact that there are going to be some changes to the plan, we're not going to be looking for a vote tonight. We'll plan to present revised plans soon, uh, and certainly in plenty of time, so that hopefully we can, um, obtain a vote, and, uh, if the Board is inclined to your approval at your next meeting. So, uh, the program for the building as originally proposed was over ninety thousand square feet. We're going to be reducing the size of that building, uh, and Wayne will get into that in a few moments. The, the primary thrust of the variance request is, uh, to not have to develop as much as would. Sorry, I, uh, to not have to, uh, develop as much parking as would be required under the bylaw. Um, and the reason for that is that because of the very unusual shape of the site, the soil conditions and topography, location of wetlands, uh, to construct the parking that's actually required would, um, necessitate degradation of a lot of wetlands. It would obviously be a significant expense, but quite frankly, from our perspective, more important than that is the fact that, uh, it would really involve, getting to the additional upland on the site by crossing wetlands. And so for that reason, you have support both the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. And so those unique, uh, topographic and shape features of the site, which don't generally, uh, affect the, uh, the land in the district, create the hardship that we're talking about, which is the, the need to locate the compliant parking. Uh, and with our application, we did present a compliant parking plan in, uh, other portions of the site and fill wetlands and degrade the resource area. So that goes to the first two criteria variants, and the third criteria, of course, is whether it's going to harm the public interest or, um, deviate from the intent of the bylaw. And I would suggest that clearly that will not be the case here. We, uh, think first of all that based on, uh, and, uh, Kathy can speak to this if the Boards, uh, would like to hear that, but based on our experience, the required parking, under the bylaw is far in excess of what is actually necessary in the market in, um, today's, uh, research and development sphere. And so, obviously, the intent of the bylaw is to ensure that there's adequate parking on site. No one is more incentivized to make sure there's adequate parking on site than, uh, than Kane, as the developer and landlord. And, so that intent of the bylaw won't be undermined. The other intent of the bylaw, of course, is to make sure that there isn't spillover parking onto townways, um, that, will create a nuisance or interfere with, uh, traffic in town. That won't happen because there is, uh, this site is a very long way from the nearest public way, and that public way is not even in Berlin, it's in Hudson. So there's really no chance of, uh, the town of Berlin being negatively impacted, but there also isn't any chance of the town of Hudson being negatively impacted. So that, that goes to the amount of parking required, and then in terms of the location of the parking, again, placing or developing the parking behind the building would, um, have a extremely negative impact on wetland resource areas, would require deforestation of a lot more of the site. And the purpose of the bylaw is obviously so that when people are traveling on public ways, uh, neighbors, um, people in town aren't going to have to look at large expanses of parking lot as they pass by a property. Here, that's literally impossible, uh, again, where hundreds of feet from the nearest public way. That public way is in Hudson. Before you get anywhere close to that public way, you go past another property owned by Kane, that also has parking, uh, in front of it. So there's really no, uh, negative impact in terms of locating the parking as proposed, and it makes all the sense in the world from an environmental standpoint. So though, that's a summary of, um, of the, the reasons we're seeking the variances that we're seeking. I'm going to turn it over to Wayne to talk about some of the additional changes to the plan that we intend to make as a result of input from the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have now, or we can hold off until after Wayne gives his presentation, whatever, um, your preference would be.
Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Bellic.
Thank you, Jonathan, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Wayne Bellic Land Design Collaborative. So since we last met, uh, we did receive, uh, an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, which, uh, was recorded today, uh, and we had met with the Planning Board, I think, twice, Kathy? Since we met last with, uh, with the ZBA. And from those meetings, we had our first discussion about, you know, looking at COVID and the impacts of COVID on, on parking areas. And then, uh, the follow-up to that, the feedback we got from the, the Planning Board was that, you know, they felt that those places, uh, may get, uh, refilled. They asked us to come back and perhaps look at, at something a little differently. So in that meeting, we discussed the idea of perhaps coming to some sort of happy medium where in our minds, we don't require, even though it's required by zoning, uh, we, we don't feel there's the need for, uh, two-hundred-and-ninety-six parking spaces. As you, uh, as you can recall, um, the original filing was for a hundred and thirty-two. We feel that that was more than adequate, however, in, in light of the feedback that we've gotten from both, uh, the ZBA and the Planning Board, we look to bring up the, uh, the project into compliance. And so we discussed again the, the concept of, uh, green parking, uh, which we met with the, uh, Planning Board last night, we had a very good, uh, meeting. Uh, as you, as you're aware, Madam Chair, uh, having been present and, uh, having weighed in on the discussion. And what we heard, uh, were favorable comments about our approach to, uh, the green, parking spaces, the reserved parking spaces, uh, and, uh, that having, uh, been, um, you know, there, there was some forward thinking in that, some, uh, positive, and I forgot the terminology, Kathy, that they use, but they, uh, mentioned the term, uh, the favorable term three times, uh, which was, which kind of made us feel good. When we spoke with, uh, I did ask the Chair about their, uh, changes in the bylaw, that, uh, the parking bylaw that they'd like to see, um, and they did indicate that they'd like to see some of this reserved parking. So with that, Madam Chair, uh, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the, the Board, and if you folks could share the screen with me, uh, I'd like to present to you, um, what we have, uh, come up with, uh, for layout to bring the site into, uh, compliance with the, uh, parking density requirements. And so I'll defer, Madam Chair, uh, would you like me to make that, uh, those presentations briefly?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, and if I could. Okay, thank you. Can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Thank you. So what we've done is, this is the parking summary table, uh, up in here. So in terms of the, the parking spaces required, uh, it was determined, uh, in some dialogue, uh, with the, uh, the Building Commissioner, that we look at two-hundred-and-fifty square, uh, one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. When we first filed the application, it was for ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred square feet, and I, I think that's one of the other points, uh, that, that's, uh, very important tonight, that, um, in our dialogue with the Planning Board, uh, I believe this Board has, uh, perhaps indicated, you know, perhaps looking at a, a smaller building footprint. Certainly, the, the Conservation Commission did. So we have reduced the building footprint from ninety-two-five to about seventy-four thousand square feet. So with that, we have based this parking layout on, uh, the seventy-four thousand square feet. Seventy-four thousand square feet with two-hundred-and-fifty square feet per parking space indicates that we are required to provide two-hundred-and-ninety-six parking spaces. We have provided, uh, three-hundred-and-two parking spaces here. In terms of the, uh, the parking spaces required for accessibility, uh, there are seven spaces based on the ADA and MAB requirements. So with that, uh, and then looking at, uh, this orientation here, uh, in terms of the variance petition, this layout and configuration would still require, uh, the granting of two variances for the parking, uh, within the setback, which would be in this area here. And parking in front of the building, uh, which would be in this area here, just east of the building with north, uh, pointing at about two o'clock on your screen. So those would still be the two variances that would be, uh, requested, however. And, and I guess if I could clarify, we would still need the third variance, the number of parking spaces, even though we are showing, uh, the required parking spaces. In our discussions with the Planning Board, which they were favorable, uh, of the concept of providing a, a design that showed two-hundred and, or three-hundred-two parking spaces, as we're showing here, uh, but setting, keeping the areas in green here as reserved parking spaces for future expansion. And the thought would be that should the tenant feel that they need, uh, additional parking spaces, the Canes would look to build those out. I kind of liken this to a, a situation where, you have a, a mall, for instance, a, a good example was the Northborough, uh, Crossing Project, which we had worked on, years ago in my previous firm, uh, where you, you come up with, uh, the overall plan, uh, which this would be like the overall plan, the comprehensive parking plan as, as part of the site plan, uh, application. And, uh, if additional spaces were required, you would add it as another phase. We would come back to the Board and seek a modification to the site plan, uh, approval, uh, to allow for, uh, the construction, uh, the design and construction of those, uh, additional areas. So like I said, in green here, what you see is those areas that, um, would be, uh, ideally set aside as, as greens parking spaces. This layout, uh, shows again, three-hundred-two parking spaces of those three-hundred-and-two parking spaces. What we're proposing is somewhere in the order of about a hundred and seventy parking spaces, uh, constructed with a hundred and thirty-two reserved, again, in green. As we stated before, with the, uh, with both Boards, Planning and, and, uh, the ZBA, we had worked quite a bit with Concom, uh, you know, respecting their sensitivity to their, their resource areas. And if you recall in the previous filing, uh, with the cannabis, uh, cultivation facility, um, they did make a comment, and they may have, uh, here in this filing, I can't recall, but they did ask that we keep the parking as far as, uh, from the resource areas, uh, as we had. So this type of alignment, uh, does allow for that. This next sheet shows, uh, basically, uh, rough grading and what it would take. So in this area here, what we see, the, the limits of the green are the limits of disturbance as a result of, uh, the construction of those parking areas. Over in here, uh, we're looking at a limit of disturbance, as you can see, it goes right up to the twenty-five foot, uh, no disturbance here, uh, and then, uh, around, uh, the perimeter of the parking area. So with that, like I said, Madam Chair, we would like to, um, the Board's, uh, consideration, uh, as we start to move forward in this process. And again, at this point, it's still will require the, the three variances with the understanding that, uh, we still will be providing the, you know, the required minimum two-ninety-six, but actually providing more than that, uh, parking spaces, the, the difference being, uh, a hundred and seventy, uh, a hundred and thirty-two spaces, we would ask be set aside as, as, uh, reserved spaces.
Just a couple of questions, if I may, if, if I'm not interrupting you, I, have you?
No, that's fine.
Last night at the meeting, I thought you said that they would, the building was going to be seventy-two thousand square feet.
Uh, seventy-four, Madam Chair.
All right, um, next, you're saying that you need one space for every two-hundred-and-fifty, um, square feet. I, my understanding is this is R and D, and the bylaw requires one for every two-hundred square feet.
Okay. Um. Where do we come up with the? Okay. I'll take a look at that, actually, if that is. I'm sorry.
No, I just don't want any misunderstanding when we meet again.
Okay.
Couple of questions I also had. It, we were told at the last meeting, um, that this would be two tenants, and they would be R and D, is that still the intent?
No, we don't know what the tenants are going to be. I just said there's a possibility, it could be, it's designed so two tenants could be completely independent, one per floor. But we don't know what it's going to be.
So we don't know who the tenants are going to be then?
No.
They could be most anything?
Anything that fits within the zoning.
Well, the site plan is specific to the use.
Right, research and development.
Okay. Um, Mr. Bellic, could I ask you what the height of the building is?
That would comply, I believe we have each level at twenty feet, so a total, I think, Kathy, we said of forty feet.
Right, but that, this is a median height. So even at the upper level, it's only twenty feet above grade.
Correct.
Because the bylaw limits you to thirty-five, right?
Right, but because of the way the building is constructed and
The mean height will be.
It wouldn't be over thirty-five.
Okay, I think that will be a question for next time when we're looking at the plans more in depth.
Yep.
And I think perhaps our Building Commissioner can take a look at the plans. There is a definition of height in our bylaw, so you might want to take a look at that. Does anyone else on the Board have any questions? Amy, do you have anything that you'd like to interject?
No, not really at this time, Madam Chair. Once we get revised plans showing exactly what they're doing, the Board really has to, I think the biggest issue is decide if a variance is even available for, um, reserved parking. The variance is obviously available for, um, parking in the setback, it's also available for parking in the front, those are prohibited. You know, places for parking, however, this whole, um, the whole issue of reserve parking is usually something that is provided for in the bylaw. So, um, that's something that I would need to look at, and, um, again, we have plans that we've never seen before, so, um, you know, we need to take a look at those also.
There was one other point that was made last night that you make, that reserved parking, um, on the right-hand side of the plan may be reoriented.
Correct. Yes, Madam Chair, uh, and what I meant by that is this leg in here may be rotated ninety degrees to continue up this way. I'm going to take a look at that. And as we, uh, reconfigure this, uh, we would take that into account.
You'll need to get bus service to the building.
Yeah. Hello, Port.
Does anyone on the Board have any questions or anything that they would like the, um, petitioners to address? If not, I'm assuming, um, Ms. Adams, that you want to request a continuance until our next meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, but, um, if I could just, um, quickly address Ms. Questle's question. I think it's really, uh, a, a process issue. From our standpoint, we're requesting a variance from the number of required spaces. And what we would envision is a, um, a condition that if the parking that we're proposing to construct now proves to be inadequate, and again, we really don't think it will, that the condition would say, and now you have to build they're all at once or in phases, what we're showing on the plan is reserved parking. So it's not a variance, um, to allow for reserved parking. It's a variance from the number of required parking spaces, and we're just trying to give the Board comfort that if for some very unforeseen reason, we end up needing more parking, we're committed to constructing it if it proves necessary. So I just wanted to address that one issue.
Mr. Silverstein, what do you see as the vehicle for the town? If for some reason they feel that, um, the parking is inadequate?
So, um, you're saying if this, a, a town-driven determinate, that the, the town is concerned that parking is inadequate as constructed, this isn't something that would be coming from the applicant saying, you know what, we feel like we need more parking. So it's an enforcement question?
Yes.
Well, um, you know, I think that could be worded as a condition in a couple different ways. It could be a determination left to the Building Commissioner, or there could be some process by which if the Board determines that there's an issue out there that we can be required to come back before the Board and as a condition of approving our variance, that if the Board, um, holds a further public hearing, that, um, we can be required to build the reserved parking that we're showing.
Well, my concern more is not, I, I know you made, um, of the fact that you, you know, we wouldn't be parking on a public road in Berlin. One of the concerns would be that they would be parking on the roadway going in, and that in turn would lessen the width of the road for emergency vehicles.
And certainly, it's uncommon to have conditions, um, requiring us to post signage and to enforce that signage, no parking. Uh, and, you know, I think frankly, there's more risk that there would be parking in some of the spots on our other property that's well before the public way, um, which on given day is two-thirds empty. It, that, you know, that's a great example of a very large parking lot, um, that, um, that doesn't get utilized, and I, I think that's what would happen here. We really don't think, I mean, Kane knows what it's doing, and it's not going to build a parking lot that it, that tenants are going to look at and say, well, this is inadequate for our purposes. We're really just trying to build in a fail-safe. But certainly, if that were, if there ended up being public safety issues out there, that's an enforcement issue and, and, uh, conditions can easily be drafted to address that.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, um,
Yes.
So if they're seeking a var, so first of all, uh, Madam Chair, you are correct, it is, um, two-hundred square feet, and therefore, we're looking at three-hundred-and-seventy, um, parking spaces rather than the three-hundred-and-two that are provided. So we're looking at another sixty-eight spaces that they're going to have to come up with. Now, if they are seeking a variance for the reduction in parking, in my opinion, they have a problem because, um, this is a self-imposed hardship because of the size of the building. And so, um, that's, that's why, that's why i- if this is going to work, um, it's going to have to be with regard to reserved parking and whether that is allowed or not, which is something that I do need to look into. Now, for example, um, I, I have a, I have a town, a municipality that does allow for reserved parking. I, I have a, I have a town, a municipality that does allow for reserve parking. And in that, in that bylaw. They have triggers for when that reserve parking. Has to become real parking. They have to actually, you know, pave it and make it parking. And um, so. So i- it's more of something, it's more of something that's regulated by a bylaw rather than something that's allowed by a variance. Because we would be looking at, um, you know. Quite a bit of um. You know, oversight on a variance and conditioning on a variance which um. You know, is, is never the cleanest way to go about this. So um. But I guess um. For tonight's purposes. Um. You know, I, I, this definitely has to be continued because first of all, we have to find out if they can do three hundred and seventy spots. Unless my math is wrong, which is always, always a good option. I'm, you, you know, I'm not good at math.
Well, it was four hundred and sixty when it was ninety-two thousand.
Well, I did use a calculator. So.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could, I. Something tells me we have a three hundred and seventy foot, square foot uh, or parking space option in the office. Um, I know that we looked at it at two hundred. Uh, as well, so that's what we'll transfer over to the new uh, plan.
Okay, and um. Amy will take a look at um, what our. Uh, guidelines are for. Um. Reserve parking. Uh, I know the planning board has said that they're looking at this. I don't know if they're looking at it for. Perhaps a fall town meeting. Um, and that they, you know. Uh, want to um, do something along these lines, it appears. But we have to go by what we have now. So um. I think it will be helpful. How soon do you think you can have new plans for us?
Full set of plans, um. I guess, Madam Chair, the question is, is new set of plans in terms of. In a conceptual manner or a full design?
Well. Something that we could vote on.
I think just a site plan, Wayne.
Okay. Uh. Probably a couple of weeks.
Okay, so at least two weeks in advance of our next meeting.
Correct.
You would be able to provide us with what we need in order to look at this.
Yes, Madam Chair. So that would, that, so in, in order for that to work from our perspective, that would assume that your next meeting is a month. Or so from now.
It's the second Wednesday of June.
Okay.
Let's see if everybody's available. Uh, Mr. Silverstein.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Um, could you send um. Uh, your name and uh, company, et cetera. Uh, to ZBA at Town of Berlin.
Um, I. It's also on the, uh. Letter, um, the variance application itself that I submitted, but I can certainly.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Jonathan, I can take care of it right now. Don't worry about it. I'll send it to Leanne right now.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, then. Does anybody on the board have any other questions? Anything they'd like to see for the next meeting so? That maybe we can wrap this up in a reasonable length of time. I know it's been going on for a while now. Before Kathy.
Uh, Amy mentioned these triggering events in the bylaws. I'd love to see what those look like in her. With her other. Experience.
I can provide those to you, Keith. No problem. It's nice to see you.
I see you.
Yeah. I can provide those. No problem at all.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other? Um, questions of Amy or. Kathy or Jonathan or. A Wayne. Am I to assume um, Kathy, that you are requesting? That we give you a um. Continuance. At your request. Until June fourteenth.
Yes, Madam Chair.
So I would entertain a motion. To continue this hearing at the request of the petitioner. Provided that she signed the necessary paperwork. Um. To June fourteenth at seven P M.
They'll move. Right, man.
It, I have a motion in a second. Did you get that, Leanne?
I did, yes.
Okay. Hi Jenny.
Hi Lynn.
Okay, I'm gonna go around and take a roll call vote then on the. Um. Motion. Uh, Kathy, would you be able to come in next week and sign the necessary paperwork?
Yes.
Kathy, I can refill it to you uh, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, I'll go around for um, a roll call vote. Denny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Uh. Pat?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So we'll see you next month, folks. Thank you very much. And thank you, um. I know Kathy, you thought I was a little nuts when I sent you to the planning board the first time, but I think it's working to your benefit.
Sure has. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, certainly has. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, um. We have continued the hearing until next month. And let's see, we're just after seven thirty and we have another hearing.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Night.
Thank you. Why am I fluttering?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, Jenny, if you wanna participate in this one, you're gonna need to listen. To YouTube and sign paperwork, okay?
Yes. Um, Madam Chair, do you still need me?
Um, well, I wanted, if the petitioner for the next hearing doesn't mind.
Oh.
I just wanted to talk to you. About. The gas station that sold off their. Um.
Where?
Green area.
Mm-hmm.
What is the procedure for bringing them in compliance now that they have another lot on near them?
So the um, the building commissioner would need to um. Would need to start enforcement. So I would suggest that the building commissioner start with a letter to them. Um, with a, a pending, uh, you know, attaching a copy of this, of the special permit. Um, informing them that this was a requirement of the special permit. Um, I, I think the reasonable thing would be that if they have green space somewhere else, that's fine. Cause it would really just was kind of general with green space. Um. And see how they respond. Um, and if not, um. If they cannot provide green space, then they're going to have to come back to this board for either. Um, you know, a revised um, special permit or um, even maybe a variance depending on what they wanna do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I take it our building commissioner is in the audience.
He is. Would you like me to promote him?
I- in case he'd like to speak, sure.
Right.
Good evening, I am here.
Hi there. Did you hear, did you hear the preceding answer from Amy?
So, so that would be to the gas station?
That would be. On Central Street, yes.
Okay.
That sold their lot off. Um, to Mr.
Urrati.
Urrati, yes. And my understanding is they have another plot of land. A one point nine seven acres. Um, probably a hundred or so feet down Taylor Road from them. And you know, it would be well perhaps that they reserve some of that. Do you want assistance in writing that letter?
Oh, absolutely.
We love you, Amy.
I can do that, Rich. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, I, you know, because I did request these two things. For the use of town council was for um, the mobile station and for. The hearing this evening. So. If you wanna stay on, um, Mr. Hanks, that would be great. And do we have Mr. Cho?
We do. Would you like me to promote him?
Please do so. Amy, if you want, you can go. This is just a renewal of. But thank you very much and we'll be in touch.
Okay, it's nice seeing everyone and I'll see you next month.
Bye.
Okay, bye.
Good evening.
Good evening, Robert.
Hi there, Board of Appeals.
Hi, Mr. Cho. Do you um, have? Um, a presentation you'd like to make to us or just tell us what your petition is about?
Uh, I am uh, I am here tonight. Seeking to renew my existing home-based contracting. Special permit located at my property of eighty-three Coburn Road, Berlin, Massachusetts. Um, the property is residential agricultural zoning district.
Okay, I just wanna get a hold of, I got a copy of your former. I printed a copy of your former permit. I just wanted to see if everything has remained the same. Not a good thing, okay. Hold on one second.
I'm gonna see if I can do some, do some music in the background while we wait.
I can get up and dance if you don't like.
No, go for it.
I'm sorry, guys. I had left it on the printer. I have a copy of the. Permit that we issued to you. I think it was in two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
And what I'd like to do is just go through what the um. Conditions were. And see if anything um. Is a, an issue now. There will be no external storage of materials with the exception of two ladders. Placed against the street side of the barn garage. The hours of operation will be from seven A M. to seven P M. The only company employee will be yourself. There will be only one vehicle associated with the business. And its gross weight will not exceed fifteen thousand pounds. This permit is issued to you and is not transferable. Um, there will be no signage on the property. The only signage will be that which is. Required on the company van. This permit is issued for a term of five years. And this permit is not valid until it has been recorded in the registry of deeds. Are any of those an issue for you?
No, ma'am.
So everything has remained the same, has it?
Yes, madam.
Does anyone else have any questions? We are a quiet group tonight. Okay, I think if everything has remained the same. We've had no communication, have we, Leanne? From anyone objecting um, to this proposal?
No.
Okay, and I have received none. Um. I would. Entertain a motion. That we renew this permit. For five years. Um. With the same. Um, conditions. As on the previous. Permit.
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Denny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
E.
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Would you like to wrote, Rich?
I would agree with everybody.
And I'm a yes. So it's, it's a unanimous vote. Now, Mr. Cho, I'm old and I'm slow. So um, I have to write a decision, then we have to get the folks all to sign it. It goes to the town clerk.
Yeah.
And she, then she mails out. To everyone, you know, our decision. But it's not final until it's been in her office without. Um, anyone raising an objection for twenty days. So after the twenty, even though you'll get a copy of the decision, after the twenty days, you have to wait another twenty days. And um. It becomes final.
And after the twenty days, I can record the deed or should I record it? Record this special permanent deed before.
You won't be able to record it until after she signs off that there's been no appeal.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was painless, was it not?
It was, but this is my first time on a Zoom meeting, so I've been very anxious about. The whole process.
You, you did very well.
So did you, are you using your phone or?
My phone, yes.
Ah.
You did good.
Well, we have a motion in a second and we have a vote. So um. I'll move that we close the hearing.
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Denny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
E.
Hi.
Um, did I get Jenny? I already.
No.
All right. Okay. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Cho. It was much less painful than you thought it would be, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, what else do we have on the agenda tonight? We have.
Proving meeting minutes.
Okay, and these would be the minutes. Uh.
April twelfth.
Okay, I'll.
Also, um, April twenty-sixth.
Okay. We can do them together of the same people there?
No, Jenny was not. No, Jenny wasn't for four twenty-six, but um.
Let's do the.
I can make a revision to four twenty-six that I should let you know about. I changed the time that we adjourned because we adjourned. Before we started the meeting in my notes. I taped a zer- typed a zero instead of a one.
That's the kind of meeting the folks would like, right?
Yeah. It's over before it starts, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for April twelfth first.
As written.
Motion to accept. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Um, any further discussion? If not, I'll, those, I'll do a roll call vote for those, why is it doing this? My goodness. Um. It has the hip ups or something. Denny?
Hi.
Jim?
Uh, I'm abstaining. I was not at the meeting.
Pat?
Hi. How was I?
Yeah, you were Gary. Yeah, you were Gary.
Okay, take you.
Okay, Keith?
Hi.
And Jenny?
I.
And I'm an I. So we have two abstentions by Jim and Pat, and the rest are I's. Now for the twenty-sixth.
Six would be Lynn, Danny, Keith, and Susanna, who's not here.
So we don't have them. We don't have a quorum to vote on it.
Okay.
We need four. So we'll pass over that and put it to our next meeting if we could.
Okay.
Okay, next we have warrants. How, do you have anything to report to us, Danny?
I submitted a warrant for your article for your reimbursement. And it should be being paid.
Okay, is that Susanna and myself?
I just had one from you.
Oh, okay. So this, this is the ninety-five dollars for me to attend the CPTC conference, folks. Just so that you know what we're paying for. Do we have any further communications?
Nothing, nothing from me.
How about the availability for the next meeting on the twelfth?
Fourteenth.
A fourteen, well, you keep me honest. For June fourteenth.
One second.
I can't believe we're in June already.
Oh, I can. My hay fever, or whatever it is, is driving me crazy, my allergies.
I said we're good.
Okay, so Danny, you're good. What about you, Jim?
I'm good.
Okay, Pat?
Yeah, I think so.
Keith?
Yeah.
Jenny?
Yes.
Okay. So we know we'll have a quorum. Anything else that should be brought before the board?
We have Rebecca McDonald in attendance, and she has raised her hand.
Okay, would you promote Rebecca, please? You're muted, Rebecca.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I sent an email, but I'm unsure of whether you can answer it electronically, but I want to find out how I go about getting the decision that you guys made in two thousand twenty enforced.
Well, I took a look at the email that you, you sent, Rebecca. And are you saying that they're not charging you seventy percent?
That they're, they're charging for the decks. Now, first of all, there's not supposed to be two different decks because they're supposed to, the exterior is supposed to be identical. So the reason for that is because if you have two different decks, one of them's obviously an upgrade. So they're making the nicer deck, the additional cost of it at full price, which is still a condo assessment, and it needs to be at seventy percent.
Well, from what I saw, they were assessing the spreadsheet that you sent with it was for the non-upgraded deck for everybody.
It was for both, I believe.
Right, and it looks like they were charging you this, the, I think you're in unit ten, and I forget, unit six, is that the other one?
I don't know the street numbers. Mine is unit ten, but I'm three Alden Drive.
Okay. Well, I, I think they're charging you the seventy percent. To be quite honest with you, I think as far as the town is concerned, and this may be, you know, a question you might want to go to the housing authority about if, when they build it, they have to have, be identical on the exterior. But I don't think there's any limit to people making changes that own condo units after it's constructed and sold for the first time.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that in order to get the nicer of the two decks, you have to pay full price for the difference of the two decks. Say deck one costs five grand and deck two costs ten grand. The extra five grand would be paid at full price. It would not be seventy percent off.
Okay, well, I still think that this is, you know, with the condo association, I think that the housing authority would have to make a decision if some of the folks have a right to do an upgrade if they're not in one of the affordable units and
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the affordable unit is not allowed to do the upgrade at the affordable price.
So you're saying if you wanted to do, well, that's a condo issue, though, isn't it?
No, you signed, you signed a decision that said all assessments and condo fees must be at seventy percent of the market rate, the lowest market rate value. Now they're charging for the decks, the seventy percent for the deck, but if you want to get the composite instead of the wood that's going to rot in a couple of years, you, plus, they're going to make you paint the wood yourself, which is against the rules. But if you want to get the composite, you have to pay full price for that. That is against the rules, and it's against the board's decision.
Well, I think that this is something that would have to come from housing. You, they are, they are not, they're not going to, they're not going to assess you for something you don't get. So it's only if you wanted the upgrade that you have to pay for it. And to be quite frank, I'm not sure how that works. That would be according to state.
It doesn't matter about the upgrade. It matters about the condo fees and the assessment. They're assessing an amount of money. The entire assessment must be at seventy percent. They can't say, okay, ninety percent of your assessment's at seventy percent, but the rest is at a hundred percent.
Well, I don't know that they can't say that, Rebecca. I think that's
Something that's, it's all right. I thought the town would help, but I have a lawyer working on it, and it just doesn't look good for the town that that they're going to ignore their own ruling that's going to be in a civil case in a couple of weeks.
Well, I'm sorry that we weren't able to help you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks. I think, have we completed the agenda? Is there anyone else looking to speak with us?
We have Christine Keith in attendance, but she does not have her hand up. That is it.
Well, put her hand up and see if she has any information for us.
I'll move her up.
Are all the attendees on?
There's no one left in attendance. Everybody's on screen.
Okay, thank you. Oh, my God.
We are still being recorded.
Okay. Christine, do you have any news for us or anything you'd like to share or any questions for us?
No, I think I was going to wait until tomorrow and find out what was on the agenda as far as the sign from planning board. And we will be in person, though, so and it would be Monday night, so we would have to, if anyone was interested, they could attend our meeting.
Oh, we'll get you to report to us.
Okay. That's fine.
Um, I'm just glad that, wow, it got brought up to the selectmen because that's a good thing. Everyone knows what we're talking about, the sign.
Nope.
Welcome to Berlin. The welcome to Berlin sign?
Yes.
No idea.
Is there anywhere we could see the sign, draft of this sign?
Lynn, do you have a copy that you can share with the board?
I think if I don't, I know Susanna does.
Okay.
So maybe we could send that around. I know it's going to be some eight or nine feet off the ground. It's going to be, I think, seventy-two inches. So what is that, like, six feet wide? And one side is going to say, welcome to Berlin, and then sponsored by the Solomon Pond Mall. The other side, and that will be the one that would be facing you going into Berlin, the other side of the sign will be the Berlin symbol at the top. And then it's going to say Solomon Pond Mall, next left, sponsored by Solomon Pond Mall. Is that about what it is, Christine?
I think so, yeah.
This is something that the Economic Development Committee has been working on. And when I attended, they went, Mr. Hoffman went to the planning board to get approval for his, for the sign. And I was in attendance, and I think Susanna was in attendance. And he said that in exchange for the Sol- Solomon Pond Mall, buying the sign for twenty-five hundred dollars, they would get five years of sponsorship. And I think both Susanna and I questioned two things. Number one, the sign need to be, needed to be approved by this select board. And number two, if the Economic Development Committee could enter into such a contract, which in fact it is a contract. So it appears that they're going to be before the select board, that their next meeting. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll finish up, and then I do have some questions.
No, go ahead.
It's not coming for ZBA, so it's going to be on the select board only.
Yes.
Right now, at this point, yes. I mean, I do have tons of questions. I don't know if I can make that meeting. It's next Monday. Is that what you said? Monday at seven. I mean, I'll voice some of my thoughts here now. I actually served on the EDC when the original plan for the sign came up, and there were questions then that were never answered. You know, like, how did we select which business was going to sponsor? And what the process was going to be for that, and even what the benefit and the sponsorship was going to be. So it's been kind of hidden as a board member in the EDC. And even now, as a resident, I have no idea. So I'm, I've just, and I know I sent you an email with listed the full bullets, but I'm hoping at some point it's not a secret, and this information becomes more public. Okay, if you have any other questions, email me, Keith, and I'll, I'll be sure to ask the questions. Great, thank you.
Okay, we don't have anyone else in the audience, Julie? Does anyone else have any?
No, there's no one in attendance.
Does anyone else have any other questions, Chris? I want to thank you for attending our meeting.
And if you have a question you think of later, any of you, just email me. Be great.
And we'll try to get a picture of that
of the sign.
Sign, yeah.
I mean, just in general, I drove by there earlier today. There's a bunch of signs popping up. How did the ones for River Bridge and there's a bunch of karate people, and it's on both sides of the town, right? So it's starting to look like that area from the Solomon Pond is, you know, been sort of the red light district of Berlin. It's just popping up all these different signs. And it's funny, because if you go on the other side, if you go where Highland Commons are in Cabela's, the signs actually stop on the Berlin side, and they don't go on the Hudson side. I don't know if that's just coincidence, and the sign people ran out of gas before they got to Hudson, or if there's bylaws in Hudson that restrict that. But it is noticeable that suddenly there's just a bunch of signs popping up. Do we have, I know we have bylaws regarding the signs, but are we monitoring these? Because I don't know.
I would tend to think that both of those, the Highland Commons and the Solomon Pond Mall, and what do we call it down there, River Bridge? They're all overlay districts. And they're under the guise or under the jurisdiction of the planning board. So it would be those folks that make those decisions.
Oh, but even that one you're talking about, that karate thing, that's all over town. Yeah, karate lessons, yeah, they're stuck up anywhere.
They just popped up everywhere.
Yeah.
I know that it has been no signs like that unless they're political signs.
Exactly.
Signs on bowls and trees. And I know Freddie has been going around, because I've seen a number of those karate signs in the back of his truck.
Oh, good for him.
Probably hasn't got them all.
Well, I just think that and I haven't had the time to really dig in too much other than driving by and taking pictures, but when you, when you come from, you know, the highway in that area, getting off of Solomon Pond, the signs are piling up now. And so I think we should start to consider more than just the physical dimensions of the sign, but sort of the collective impact that all of these signs have on welcoming residents to, or welcoming visitors to our community, because from my standpoint, it's starting to look like it's clutter, and it's not, you know, it's certainly not supporting the town that, that I feel I'm a part of.
Yeah, I agree with you, Keith.
One of the things when you get to Rotary down there is there's some different signs, and the planning board authorizes what they call off-premise signs. So there's a couple of different intersections in town where they allow people to advertise their business. So again, when you get to Rotary, the first Rotary, but the second one, you'll see a couple of different signs on that around that Rotary. Those are all authorized by the planning board as off-premise signs.
You know, those pizzas and pizza here where he's parking there, yeah.
Yeah, they all seem to support River Bridge. Go ahead, sorry, Dennis.
I thought that the signs around the Rotary needed a ZBA approval. Because we did the, what is it, three eleven or two eleven South Street for the music stand. And now there's some more put up there. I want to think it's Bill O'Quilles there, the farm. He puts his sign up on his property. But there's another one, there's another one right there off the Rotary right now.
Yeah, I know Gillis has, Gillis Landscaping has their sign there at the Rotary. And Cordelia's Farm has a sign there. And there's one for the Rotary or somebody. And there's one for the Rotary or somebody. There's one for Mockingbird is which, which I know, I know several of them have gone to the planning board for off-premise signs. I don't think Gillis, that I'd have to see if that one went to planning board or not because they're in Hudson, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, they're still in Berlin.
No, they're Berlin.
Oh, they're still in Berlin? Okay. Maybe that's something we should do is get a list from the planning board, the signs that they've approved to be at different intersections. That might be a good starting point to find out which ones were placed there by planning board approval. Signs are popping up all over town. It's, I've noticed we approved that Mark Rhodes project there on South Street. And there's two big signs out in front of that that were never part of the approval process.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's sort of my concern is that it just seems to be growing and growing. And where, where is it going to end, right? I mean, that's just on one side of town. I mean, fortunately, it's the farthest side from me, I guess. But I feel bad for the people that live in that area, but you know, are we going to start to have sign wars from the other end soon in Cabela's and, you know, then anybody else moving in the, in the area? It just feels like if we're just going to start opening this up on every angle on town, I think someone should be looking at it as a bigger picture. And if you're saying the planning board does look at it and has decided to go in this direction, as a resident, I can say I'm very disappointed in them and I think we should, you know, I, I think people should be more aware of who's making these decisions on, on the town's behalf.
Well, they're not approving all signs, but again, it is, they're, they're in their regs, there's different, an assigned by law, they can approve off-premise signs at different street intersections. I'd have to look at the bylaw, see which, which streets those are. And again, maybe it's a good idea to to find out which ones they've approved. I know they've done a couple while I've been here.
Yeah, great.
And I.
Looking to it.
I know that the planning board is going to deal with signs back to that LED stuff. And they're going to take a look at the signage bylaw. So one thing we might want to do is to ask them when that comes on the agenda to let us know. Leanne, did you give? I think I forwarded to you the note I got today from the planning board?
Yes, I forwarded that to the board.
Okay, thank you.
And to Rich Hanks, the building commissioner.
Right. My, my issue with it was that, you know, that's, you have to look at body A, section ten in order to, you know, have reason to do this, but you can take a look at what they wrote. Does anyone?
Yeah, this is. On kind of to Christine too, we are a green community. And I'm not sure what that encompasses because you can never kind of figure out where it is. But as a green community and because of climate change, et cetera, et cetera, why are we not asking companies to come in and use solar power and recycling water and green areas in like the development? Because originally when this company came in to do their marijuana facility, they said it was too expensive. I find that hard to believe when you're building a two acre property, that you can't do some kind of solar lighting and some kind of recycling and reclaim, you know, reclaiming water. And at that time, I actually did contact another marijuana growing company, which was in Massachusetts, which was doing all of this. So why are we not pushing these companies to come forward a little more greener?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to put that in my notes. I don't think anyone has asked those questions before, so it's a good one. And maybe we need to be more aware of being green since we are a green community. Right now, I don't think we have anybody who's called and had an interest in Berlin for marijuana growing or, or a selling facility. But.
Well, they were going to be a growing originally and she had no inclination to do that based on cost.
Well, I think you've got a good point, Pat, and I don't think it's just for marijuana.
Yeah, for everything.
Even with this facility that's proposed down on Bigelow.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
The lighting in the yard, the lot, you know, the, the parking lighting and stuff like that, they could have cellar panels there.
They certainly could.
And I think that that would probably come under the auspices of a planning regulation, but I think it's something we should bring up to them. Either.
Okay, since I'm on a roll. How come also? You know, Massachusetts now, they are starting to ban all the roadside. And now every time I go by Town Hall, you have all those little bait boxes out there that are full of roadside, which is kit was eaten by the little mice and go away and then the owls eat them. Now, this is going to be eventually banned in Massachusetts. And again, we're talking green environmental communities. Isn't there a different way to catch a mouse or what's the big deal?
I, I think that Fred has been very conscious of what he can use and cannot use because he's had issues with mice at the Lincoln Street facilities, the Lincoln Street building. And I don't know if it was our, I think it's the municipal building too. There's been some issues.
Because you've got the bait boxes out there, yeah.
And, but I think that he's been pretty conscious about what you can and cannot use.
What he uses in there. Yeah, which is probably is, is I, the state is planning on changing it, so maybe it hasn't come down yet. I was just curious.
And he's, he's not had a lot of success unless recently he has, because he hasn't come in for a, you know, a report to the board for a little while. You know, that would be a, a, a good question to ask him too, when he comes in.
I mean, just to get it on the record, so people know, it's, it's interesting that you said that. I actually had a sick raccoon two days ago here, which is the fourth one that has died. We've had three cats. What, what happens is they come in off of sixty-two and go to our back pasture and then die there. And you know, it's not a wound from a, you know, from a coyote or some other predator because they would eat them. And a lot of times, blood, yeah, there's blood coming from nose and so.
So someone has poison out, yeah.
Someone's got a lot of poison out, yeah. And I've talked to all of the surrounding neighbors, that, that area would be Paul McAlk, you know, coming through his yard and everybody says they're not using anything of that scale, some stuff in their basement type thing, but nothing that would, you know, so it really probably has to be from the, 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 what's the big, the town building that's next to Jenny's?
Highway.
Yeah, the highway. But anyways, so yeah, there's definitely something going on, for sure.
I can ask. I don't mind.
Thank you. The list gets longer. Thank you.
You can just carry forward that the, the board as a whole of individuals is pretty much against putting down rat poison because it endangers not only domestic animals like cats and so forth, but like you say, Keith, you know, owls and anyone else who would pick up a dead mouse that eats the poison.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, do we have anything else? If not, we can continue, but I'm going to suggest that we, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Did you get that, Leanne?
Yep, Jim and Keith.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Denny? Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Keith?